And you can see this hearing can be virtual or teleconference. It does remove the instructional requirement and is a step that all districts must compete. There's not a statewide waiver action. So when we went into the form that the Department of Public Instruction has placed, it simply just wants to know the date that we held the forum and if it has been approved by our school board. So at this point, I believe that no one had signed up, Marissa made or Marissa had mentioned for the public forum, but I would open this up to you for discussion in terms of if you have questions for us or if you want to discuss with each other whether or not you would like to approve the waiver for the district.
Thank you very much. Members of the board have any questions?
No, but I'd like to apologize for my dog barking periodically for this whole meeting.
Jim, this is Eric. How many hours have we already lost?
Oh, I don't have that calculation in front of me, but this is today was the, I believe, the 10th day of instruction. And so I would estimate, and Kim, I'm going to lean on you a little bit. There's a little under, I mean, if we take lunch out, there's, our students are usually in our schools for about seven hours a day. If we remove time for lunch, you've got about six and a half hours, so roughly 65 hours. Kim, would you concur?
Yeah, roughly. I was trying to do the math quickly on a piece of paper, but you beat me.
Well, I had to multiply by 10, so that was my advantage. It's probably a little bit less because of passing time, but I think it's, it's in that area.
Thank you. Is there any other question? Hearing non-den, I would entertain a motion. The school board requests an instructional hours waiver from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Charles, Commissioner Vu, and a second by?
Me, Klinkhammer.
Commissioner Klinkhammer. All those who, let's do a roll call just to have an accurate record.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes. Thank you. We have approved the motion. Our next item in the agenda is public forum. Has anyone else tried to sign up, Marissa or Meta?
No members of the public signed up.
Thank you very much. Then we will proceed with our next point in the agenda, the superintendent's report. Dr. Harabek?
Excuse me, here?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, I'll say good evening again, everyone. I'm going to review the upcoming events for the school board. We had planned on April 9th to have a canvassing of ballots for the election of school board members. That date will have to be put off as the extension for absentee voters was extended until today. And those votes will not be counted until at least April 12th. So sometime after 12th, we will notice again, it may be April 13th, but sometime after that date, we will notice for the canvassing for the ballots of the election of board members. On April 14th, there are three virtual meetings being held. At 8:00 AM, it will be the Policy and Governance Committee. At 1:00 PM, it will be the Budget Development Committee. And at 4:00 PM, it will be the LEAP Committee Meeting. On April 16th, there will be a virtual meeting of the Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee, and that will take place at 4:30 PM, also through a virtual meeting. And the next scheduled meeting of the school board is April 20th at 7:00 PM. I'm going to hold the rest of my superintendent's report until after the employment report, if that is acceptable to everyone.
Yes, thank you very much. The next point in the agenda is the President's Report. I have a brief report as well. During the next policy and governance meeting, I will be introducing new language to have the possibility of meeting remotely in our policy. So we will not need special authorization from, or direction from DPI. Hopefully, we can have that in place in two sessions, within the next two sessions. The next item is the new superintendent search. As you know, we have arrived to a point where we have publicly identified the three finalists. And Dr. Vika has worked intensely to put together an agenda to have the opportunity, for them to have the opportunity to meet remotely with our stakeholders. So that has been a fantastic job done. And I'd just like to mention that our finalists are Ms. Rosalie Daca, who has served since 2013, as we're seeing Unified School District Chief Academic Officer. We have also Dr. Rep. Hillstrom, who has served as a Director of Educational Equity for Oseo Area Schools since 2015. And Mr. Michael Johnson, who has been an Assistant Superintendent in the South Washington County School District since 2014. The interviews will be taking place next week, and instructions to participate will be forwarded shortly. That's all I have to report tonight. Do we have a student representative report?
We have no student representatives in attendance.
Thank you. So we can move on to school board committee reports. Let's begin with budget development.
Thank you. Good evening. We did meet last Tuesday. It was, I think, our inaugural, one of the inaugural WebEx meetings, and served as a guinea pig, and it went pretty well, went pretty smoothly, actually. We talked about the actuarial study, which was reviewing some of the impact, the anticipated impact of the OPEB changes that the board made late last year. And I think we'll be bringing that to the larger board at some point in the future here, not too distant future. We also spoke about the referendum and some of the planning around that. And we will be meeting again next Tuesday, as Dr. Harabek mentioned, at 1:30 PM.
Thank you. LEAP Committee?
LEAP Committee has not had a meeting since our last board. We have an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Demo and trends?
Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee met last Thursday and came to a recommendation for short-term relief of some of the South Side elementary schools. And we'll be hearing more about that tonight. They will meet again next Thursday to either work on questions from the board regarding that recommendation or to continue moving forward towards a longer-term relief plan related to the referendum, which they hope to bring in August.
Thank you very much. P&amp;G did not meet. We're planning to meet next week. Our next point in the agenda is legislative update. Dr. Nordine?
So I am currently on my third draft of this this afternoon, given all of the action around the state. The big news, of course, today was, and just before the start of the meeting, was that the state Supreme Court has struck down an order by the governor to postpone our spring elections, which is scheduled for tomorrow. The governor had ordered the election moved to June 9th to help to avoid risks associated with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The leaders of the legislature challenged this order, and it was blocked by the Supreme Court. Therefore, there will be in-person voting for tomorrow's spring election. That does include our school board election. I would ask that if you requested an absentee ballot, that you send it in as soon as possible. And if you do need to vote in person tomorrow, remember to preserve social distancing and take all the recommended precautions, such as wearing a mask. Don't let your vote be suppressed by this action, but also please stay safe in voting. The only other news item of note is that Senate Bill 364, which we've mentioned several times and is the one that involves changing the legal age to purchase tobacco and vaping products to 21, is waiting for its final vote in the Senate after having passed the Assembly. A passage of this bill would allow local law enforcement to enforce the federal laws that also moved that age to 21. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards has sent a letter to the President of the Wisconsin State Senate asking for that to be voted on before, and it shuts down its term. Good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Nordine. The next point in the agenda is the consent resolution agenda. The board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. The items are Minutes of March 16, 2020, Minutes of Closed Session, March 16, 2020, Minutes of Special Meeting, March 13, 2020, Minutes of Closed Session, March 13, 2020, Human Resources Employment Report, Health and Dental Insurance Rate Renewal, 2020, 2021 Base Wage Increase for Hourly and Non-Affiliated Employees, CISA 10 Contract Renewal, COVID-19 Compensation Plan Updated, April 6, 2020, and five-year capital. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Harder.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Lyons. And this is a roll call to vote.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Next point in the agenda is, I'm sorry, Dr. Harabek wanted to complete her report.
Thank you. With the approval of the employment report, you approved some changes in administrative assignments. The first one being that Dave Oldenburg has been approved to be the permanent principal of Memorial High School. Darryl Peterson is also moving from acting Director of Buildings and Grounds to permanent position of Director of Buildings and Grounds. And you also approved the transfer of Heidi Newman Nealan from Principal of Putnam Heights Elementary School to be a district instructional coordinator working in teaching and learning. I'm looking forward to seeing the leadership of all three of these individuals. They certainly have proven their leadership in the past in the district, and we look forward to their moving into their permanent positions. So congratulations to them.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of them, too. Looking forward to your leadership. At this point, we're going to consider individually the conditions of use and facility fee schedule. And this is an Abby presentation.
Both Abby and I, this is Kim, will be presenting this. I think Abby is going to pull the PowerPoint up on her screen.
Try this again. I turned my mute off. Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. I'll try again. I think I'm doing something wrong. I had it all ready to go earlier. There we go. I missed this step. How about now? Okay, there we go. All right. So yes, Kim is right. Kim and I are going to do this together. And I've got the condition of use and fee schedule updates. So we'll go through the fee schedule changes first, and then we'll go through some updates for the rest of the board and the community. So we decided to put these in number order so that way then it would make life a little bit easier to see and point out. So the first change on the fee schedule is really just to update the date. Obviously, this is going to affect July 1st of 2020, and so we updated the, we removed the 2019 date. Our change number two is really just a renaming of the categories for our facility users. So in the past, you can see we had a standard rate, a not-for-profit rate, and a for-profit rate. And so really what we did was we recommended changing that to be resident youth, nonprofit with documentation provided, that they are a nonprofit entity, and then a standard, which is just our standard rate. And so that was the updates there. And number three, we were just updating the cancellation fee and making sure that that language matches what the group is. And so it's for the cancellation fee is for all users. But again, we updated the words to say nonprofit on that slide. We go on to some more fee schedule changes. Change number four was something that was brought to our attention related to the auditorium and the Memorial Little Theater. We had recommended a four minimum, a minimum of four hours of rental. And then we realized that during the week, we only have a three-hour rental available based upon other community use groups. And we'd usually open the gyms and the auditoriums from 6:30 to 9:30. So you can't have a four, a minimum of four hours because there isn't four hours during that point in time. Then change number five, because we are making that change, we needed to update the rates as well. So that way then you can see what the rates are. And so those are just updated reflecting that there's not four hours to have. Let's see. I think that's all the changes on that slide. Change number six, we mirror our dragging and line fields to match the, what the city gives us. And so we just updated that. The city notified us of their increase. And so I think their increase went into effect January 1st. And so then we would make ours July 1st to be in conjunction and match. And then change number seven is, we've been getting some requests to users to use our parking lots. And in the past, we didn't think it was a big deal because our parking lots are outside. And then we started talking about it. If an event uses our parking lots, that may prevent them from being able to use the inside facilities. And so we decided that we should add parking lots as a potential fee, and we would evaluate that fee based upon what the need is at that point in time. So that is just a new addition on our list. We haven't had that on our list before. And then change number eight is just taking off the implementation date related to the before and after-school childcare programs. If you remember, a year ago, when we updated the fee schedule, there was a recommendation from the Revenue Committee to begin charging $10 per day per site for the after-school childcare. And we didn't want to kind of spring that on them. So the Revenue Committee and the Board approved that that would go into effect July 1st of 2020. So this update is just removing that implementation date. We've had conversations with them. They're aware that it's coming. So they've had time to plan from their end. With those eight items, is there any questions or any discussion that the board would like to have?
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
So Abby, when you, when you talk about adding parking lots as part of the fee structure, play that out for me a little. Do you, do you anticipate, so if someone rents one of, let's say Memorial, they might also have to have a fee to use the parking lot? Or I was a little bit confused about what you were saying there.
I'm sorry. I probably wasn't very clear. So on occasion, we'll get a request to just use the parking lot and not any of the rest of the facility. So a common one would be like the air show. So we put a request in the.
Just renting the actual parking, not using it, people parking there because they're coming for it. I get it. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's actually a really good question. Yeah, if somebody's renting our facility, we wouldn't charge for the parking lot. But we've gotten a request maybe for a special holiday, like church service. The air show, I know has come up. I know Country Jam. They like to have cars parked at Memorial, and then the bus comes in and takes them down to Country Jam. So there's very few events that request it, but they're, they're larger events. And I think our discussion was, we're losing an opportunity to earn any money off facility rental if our parking lots are full because then a group doesn't have a place to park if they wanted to use inside the facility.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Good question. You're welcome.
Any other question? If there's no other question, then we will do. I'll need a motion to approve and facility fee schedule as recommended.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Dr. Nordine, second by Commissioner Vu. Let's do a roll call to vote.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes. The recommendation has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll turn it over to Kim.
Thank you. And I want to talk about the conditions of use for community users and the changes for 2021. Those changes really fall into four areas. So I've kind of, I've kind of organized them by reason for change rather than where they are in the, in the document. One of the reasons for changing is moving to our online system, Event Manager. The other is just reflecting the fee structure that Abby presented. There are also updates to the insurance requirements. And then just a little bit of clarifying language, some language that folks found confusing before. So the first, Abby, if you want to go to the next slide. Thank you. The first section is really just, you'll see some language referring to either email or online versions. And that really is reflecting our new facility use system, which is called Event Manager. So a lot of the things that we used to do on paper will now be available online. And we wanted to reflect those changes within the agreement. So Facility, the Facility Use Office, for an example, shall process the application, application for facility use. An email, and an email containing the rental contract will be sent. Previously, that was hard copy paper. Now we're saying you'll get it via email. Changes, corrections, or additions to any request can be made online. Again, previously, people needed to stop in at the Facility Use Office to make those changes. The number four that you see, the user shall make payments to the Eau Claire School District online. Previously, those payments needed to be made in person or have a check mailed. So as I said, one of the, one of the reasons that we've made some changes is because we're moving to an online system. On the next slide, again, you'll see another change that is simply a reflection of us moving to an online system. All cancellations must be entered online. Previously, people needed to stop in at the Facility Use Office in Buildings and Grounds or the Service Center and submit that in writing. The, the next slide also shows some movement to an online system where people can now upload some of the documentation that they needed previously. So as an example, their insurance documents or their lifeguard certificates. Previously, they needed to make a paper copy for us and either, again, email or mail those in U.S. Mail to Facility Use or physically stop by the Facility Use Office to give us those documents. Now folks are allowed to, or able to upload them online. Of course, if people wanted to do any of this in person, Bev is still available and would take these items in person, and she can upload them into the system for folks if that's a barrier for them. But we do, we do offer the online service now.
Thank you. Any questions about the conditions?
There's a couple more changes. Would you like to discuss the ones I have so far? Or would you like me to go over the others?
Let's finish your presentation. I'm sorry.
Okay. Again, a couple of more changes related to uploading documents you saw on the next slide. And then you'll see some language. I'm sorry, Abby, you can go to the next one.
There's also another one.
Reflecting the fee schedule. So everything that Abby just talked about, going to resident youth, nonprofit, and that sort of thing is all reflected also in this document. So the changes that you just approved would be now reflected in this document. And you can see that on the next slide as well. Resident youth, nonprofit, and standard rates. There were some insurance changes as well. Changes to the way Eau Claire is stated on the certificate so that one insurance document can cover any facility in the Eau Claire School District rather than having it specific to, for example, if I were renting North High School, rather than just putting North High School in there, there is language that will help insurance companies and help renters be able to state that that insurance would cover them for any building in the district that they rent. Um, that they rent. There's also been um some conversation with the insurance company about our um. Our liability coverage. Um, so those numbers were updated as well. And then the last little bit was just some clarifying language. There was some confusion. It's it's. Something that we put in there is that food and beverages other than water are prohibited in the gym courts. Um, but then sometimes there are events where people self concessions and they bring them into the gym. So it just becomes confusing. So we added, you know, the word gym courts rather than the gym as a whole. Um, because the stands, you know, sometimes people do have food in the stands. And then we asked that any beverage um have a a sealable cap so that we can prevent spills. And that um is the a summary of the changes. Um, and so we'd be ready for any questions or discussion now and or a vote to approve the condition of use changes.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Mm hmm.
Questions from the Board? Here now then, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve uh. The recommendation. Uh, about conditions of use. Changes for twenty twenty one. Moved by Commissioner Harder.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Klinkhammer. Let's do a roll call to vote.
Commissioner Vu? Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer? Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
The recommendation uh about conditions of use has been approved. Thank you very much. Uh, we can move on now to. Uh, our committee. We'll adjourn to committee. And the first uh report or item for discussion is Employee Engagement Act ad hoc committee discussion. Is someone going to present on this uh item?
I might be able to do that with a little help from the Budget Development uh. Uh, committee members. Um, one of the things that we've talked about in budget development is um. Getting more feedback from uh staff members uh about the development of the budget. Uh, and about uh perhaps doing some problem solving. Um, or some review of items associated with the budget. We have a committee that is currently in place um that has. Taken on this duty kind of in the past. Now, I'm gonna have Kay talk to you a little bit about. How that uh committee has operated. So Kay, can you, can you come in?
Hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so the committee Dr. Hardbeck is referring to is the holistic committee. And this is a committee that over the years has been responsible. Prior to Act Ten to having um. Detailed involvement in the um. Participation in determining the district's um health insurance. And um then since Act Ten, the role has changed from the holistic committee. And it's gotten more general and broader due to the limitations of the district's. Ability to be able to bargain insurance with employee groups. So that the uh purpose of that committee has expanded and become more generalized. And so we've been able to have the members of that committee um. Really do more of a holistic approach to employee health and wellness. Um, and expand their role much beyond that of just an insurance committee. And so there had been conversation about. Kind of repurposing the um the work of that committee to expand it to more of the things that this employment and. Or Employee Engagement Ad Hoc Committee was looking for things to, for um employees to be able to provide input on. And so um that was the holistic committee's involvement in. Uh, the ad hoc piece that Dr. Hardbeck was talking about.
So I think one of the things that we talked about in the Budget Development Committee. Is the idea that, you know, as we have dealt with our deficit funding and our lack of funding. Um, we have made significant reductions. Um, in what we call the the thirty percent or the eh twenty percent of our operating funds. Uh, but we've not really been able to. Uh, tackle the costs that are associated with our employees, our compensation, our benefits, those kinds of. Um, of costs that the district has. And so perhaps by involving employees, as we did with the OPEB committee. It might be an opportunity to bring in some new ideas. Uh, certainly to have a look at our benefits packages. Um, and things like that in a way that uh maybe inform the Budget Development Committee's work and eventually the Board's work. So in talking about how we might do this, we wondered. If maybe the holistic committee's work could either be expanded or repurposed. Uh, to fulfill this need.
Any questions from Board members?
So, says Aaron, I can chime in, uh, just. See, this is a follow on to our work session as a board a few months back. Uh, we talked about the value of. Sort of engaging the wider staff in some of these questions, and I think Dr. Hardbeck said it very well. About our, that's sort of the twenty percent, eighty percent um questions that we face on the budget development. And as we look increasingly at the eighty percent, things like OPEB, but not limited to OPEB, it's it's a broader range of things. Uh, OPEB alone isn't. Isn't going to uh necessarily cover. Uh, the the kinds of of cost savings that we may need to look at if. Uh, if budget returns. To uh the place where it was over the last few years, which uh seems increasingly likely. Uh, especially in light of recent events. So we, you know, we want to make sure that we're engaging uh the staff as as we make those decisions and getting their. Feedback where we can and and as Dr. Hardbeck mentioned, also. Uh, soliciting ideas uh about uh. You know, different ways to to approach uh these cost savings. So uh, I I think this is evolve of the notion of um. Evolving the holistic committee. Uh, and sort of rebooting it or uh revitalizing it a little bit uh with with a little bit of a different charge. Um, that's focused on these questions is is where we come to in our discussions. In budget development and we, you know, then we've. Yeah, at a point where we want to bring it to the larger board for for discussion about what that might look like if indeed it happens at all.
Thank you.
I have a question or two.
Yes, Commissioner Vu?
So this is a ad hoc committee. And I'm wondering if it's going to be an annual thing or specifically for this term, this time around only. And also where in the timeline this committee come in to um. Come into place and then how the committee's recommendation will get back to the district.
I can speak briefly to it. I mean, we we are looking at, uh, this is really about um. Uh. Sort of a carrying on with the timeline that we've talked about, which uh I think. At the moment, we're talking about po- possibly convening. Selecting membership and convening this committee. We had been talking about trying to do it. At least one time, perhaps before the end of the year. Uh, whether that happens or not is another is another question, but we. Have been looking at this year as as a time when we had a a little bit of. Because of our surplus and and whatnot, we had a little bit of time to. Okay, let's regroup and think about if. Between OPEB changes and other changes that we may consider. What do we think? Uh, what versions of those changes do we think are going to be adequate? And uh also have some degree of of acceptance amongst agreement between. Board members, downtown staff, and the wider staff. Um, and and so that in terms of the timeline, we're sort of looking at this this year of. Of work and discussion on, all right, well, we've got a little respite here with our surplus. We need to prepare for not having a respite in future years, and so let's let's do that preparations. That's kind of the timeline as we were looking at it. I don't I don't know if that answers your question, Charles.
Know what it does.
Dr. Torres?
Question?
Um, I just wanted, this is Kay. I just wanted to add that part of what. I think I had taken away from the conversations with Budget Development. Uh, committee was the fact that this, the Employee Engagement Ad Hoc Committee um. And the holistic committee kind of. Um, morphing into this would be. An ongoing committee that um budget development would use. As needed with whichever. Items came up that needed to be investigated and sought out for input from employees. And so. I believe um that. It would be different topics that came to the forefront that would need to be. Investigated for input. And with each one of those different topics, there'd be a different timeline. And a different idea in terms of how much time the committee had to be able to investigate. That particular topic and um what type of feedback would be sought after and. How it would be reported back to Budget Development and then. Um, eventually back to the full Board. And that it wouldn't just be the holistic committee. I mean, the holistic committee would be. Um, kind of. The overseeing committee of that, but then with each individual topic that came forward, we'd be soliciting out. Specific people for each of those different committees. Because, for example, the OPEB committee was specifically. People were specifically sought after to be part of that committee. Um, the membership was very specific to make sure that we were able to cover all of the different. Um, voices that we needed on that committee. We wouldn't want those same voices to be present if we were going to look at something totally unrelated to OPEB. So the audience for the work that we're going to be doing or anticipated to do would be different for every single topic that we're going to look at. So I think that budget development. Um, the conversation that we had really looked at for seeing that membership changing. With each of the topics that were going to be looked at. And so um I don't think that it's a single standing committee, other than the members who are on the holistic committee. And then. I think we saw membership changing, coming in and out based upon the topic that was being sought after for input by the Budget Development Committee. I think that it's pretty fluid and it would change based upon what it was that the Board needed input on.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you, Kay. I'll just say that that very much aligns with uh my perception of of the Board, uh, the committee discussion as well, is that the points that Kay just made.
Thank you. Uh, we actually don't need to take an action. On this point tonight. But I guess we can all appreciate the pertinence and importance of this uh ad hoc committee. Uh, is is that what you needed to hear for the budget development?
I think that's helpful. I would I would also make one more point is that uh we've talked a lot about, you know, getting input from this committee, but. We've talked also a lot. Uh, in in Budget Development Committee about. That this is a two-way conversation. It's it's also about engaging. Our wider staff in, for those who are interested in looking at these problems, and that they in turn can help. Uh, message to the wider staff about those from the perspective of another staff member. In the hopes that we can get more buy-in and we, as particularly the value of this, uh, as we look at going into referendum. Uh, you know, we're looking at, you know, that that same kind of uh approach that we're taking to the referendum. We're looking to do it for for other kinds of budget decisions that are facing the boards today. I just wanted to make that point about the two-way nature of this.
Great.
I think the next, the next uh, the next step would be to um. Create a structure for uh appointment or selection to this ad hoc committee. Um, come up with a clear definition and a charge from the committee. Also with the idea of that it would be as with any ad hoc committee that once their charge is completed. Committee would disband, perhaps a new committee would come in to look at the next. Uh, phase of of the work uh as directed by Budget Development and the Board. Um, but we probably need to formalize the ideas that are behind this and uh. Bring this back to you at the next board meeting so that you can approve it and we can start taking um applications for membership.
It sounds like a good plan. Uh. So we're looking forward to your initiative.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marshall.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next point in the agenda is demographic trends, short-term relief options for elementary schools.
That is me, and I believe that um. Marissa, yes, she shared, so I can pull up a presentation here. So at this time, I believe that you can see um a. A slide that says elementary short-term relief. Is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, um.
Josh in attendance?
Um, he is, he is. Josh, are you unmuted so that you can share in the presentation as well?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you very much, Josh.
For having me.
Well, welcome. So um Josh Clements is the Chair of the Demographic Trends. And Facility Planning Committee, and he and I are pleased to present tonight. Um, we're both working remotely, you know, and just learning WebEx, so we appreciate your patience. Um, and if you could just bear with us, we'd like to share with you tonight. Uh, the recommendation of the committee um related to short-term relief plans uh for some of our elementary schools. Um, we're looking at um the uh relief plans for elementary schools and the strategic plan. Really, um, this is related to uh the impact that some overcrowded crowded schools have. On academic achievement or social emotional growth of students. Um, and the Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee is really made up of committee members. Um, and so um. It also highlights um our partnerships with families and the community. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to Josh, who wants to share with you a little bit of the work of the committee. As well as the recommendation that we're coming forward with.
Thank you, Kim. So. Green is a general timeline. Uh, that we've been pursuing, and this goes back. Uh, about two years to um the discussion about flexible boundaries for. Relieving pressure from Roosevelt. And uh, that we believe was uh my understanding is successful. Um. And given the current enrollment patterns across the district, we recognize that many schools are. Um, uncomfortable in terms of where they are at in capacity. And so responding to direction from the Board, we're. Looking to create two uh separate recommendations. The the first tonight uh discussed for short-term relief. Um. Which um I I put together a memo with with Kim's assistance and. Uh, unfortunately, that was sent out this morning, so hopefully we have a chance to look at it, but. We laid out some of the assumptions that we're operating within. And one of those is that the short-term relief plan. Um, really would only likely be effective for two or three years. Um, given that even after we do some rebalancing, many of the schools will still be uncomfortable. And making compromises in terms of how instruction is being delivered. So. Um, so here we are, April twenty twenty with this. This recommendation um which addresses. Uh, Mans and Meadowview, um seeking to try to um. Shift some enrollment to Robbins where there's a little bit more capacity, but not a lot. And then looking ahead to August, providing a recommendation for long-term elementary school enrollment on this, generally in the south side of the school district. And over the course of the past two or three months, we've been working with the city of Eau Claire and county of Eau Claire to get a better idea as to where development is happening right now, because there are dwelling units being constructed or have already been permitted, but we don't see that enrollment yet. You know, there's a lag between these things. And then we've also asked them, where do you anticipate development to occur within the next five to 10 years? And we haven't gotten that information yet. So we're trying to make these recommendations in the broader context of skating to where the puck is going, not necessarily to where things are at the moment. And this next slide here shows just some of the five elementary schools on the south side and what their enrollment figures have been at the level. And so as you can see, there's a lot of red on there. That's schools that are 90% capacity or greater. And then the orange is 85% or greater. And generally, what we understand, and I'm not an education practitioner, but my understanding is, once you start getting around 85% capacity, you're having to make compromises typically, because you lose flexibility. If you have a large grade cohort, you don't have an extra classroom to add an extra class of fourth graders or an extra class of third graders. So you start to experience that crowding. These weren't designed for that kind of flexibility. So when we have facilities that are operating at 90%, you're really, you're really in a stressful situation. And so what we're trying to do is look at Meadowview and Mans in particular and see if we can relieve some of that pressure to Robin, a larger school, so it can handle more capacity. I touched on in my memo that Putnam Heights is also in the red. However, the class sizes that we can see, they haven't had to make some of the same compromise, at least yet. We're hoping that in the short term, relieving some pressure from Mans and Meadowview will comfortable position. So again, the goal is to provide short-term relief for the next two or three years, until hopefully a long-term enrollment capacity can be achieved using existing facilities. So we explored three with the assistance of staff, and really staff did a lot of the homework on this. So reboundary the entire district, which would be a pretty left. Looking at mobile classrooms, so bringing in either built-on-site or prefabricated that can be used temporarily for matter of few, to add additional classroom, one or more of the site. And then the other third option being flexible boundaries, similar to what was accomplished with Roosevelt, to give families a voluntary option to try to relieve some of this pressure. So on the next, go to the next slide here. So we did not recommend reboundary the entire district, because that would inconvenience probably a large number of students in many schools. Probably, probably not necessary, especially if we're planning to add capacity somewhere in the medium term. Mobile classrooms are not recommended, based on research of staff, that if we don't have a budget, you know, these things will cost money to build or to rent or purchase, bring into the site and hook up and things like that. And based on the vendors that were communicated with, there was not certainty that we'd be able to do that for the coming school year anyway. So that left us with a flexible boundaries option. And so with the assistance of some of our committee members who have geospatial technology expertise, who are able to map out where enrollment is down to the household level, and also where other students or future students live that we're aware of. And we came up with some boundaries we think that will get us some relief. Again, similar to 2016, so staff has a procedure to follow to define these boundaries and give students, families, those options. It limits transportation impacts. And so these are neighborhoods which, with work with Student Transit, have identified are not arbitrary lines, that they make sense for their bus routes. It would shift to Robbins, where there is some capacity, not a lot, but there's some. And it's really the only school on the south side that has any. And it would maintain relative proximity between households and the schools that they'd be assigned to. So these areas are not very large, and so it doesn't make a dramatic shift in boundaries. And it would seek to keep families together. Those students who are currently attending those schools or their siblings, there'd be continuity. So it would be new students coming into the district or kids who are third, or three-year-olds and four-year-olds who don't have family members in the schools yet. So our next slide here, it shows these areas. And I believe there's also this in your packet. So the first area would move kind of the London Road neighborhood from Mans to Robbins. There's, hopefully, that will achieve the relief from Mans. What it would also allow us to do is to shift from Meadowview to Mans. And so it's, you know, it's moving pieces in both directions, you know, in and out, to try to achieve this balancing, because we can't move students from Meadowview to Robbins particularly easily, because it's not this proximate. So, and then Area Two. So if Area One will hopefully get us what we need to do at Mans plus additional, that would allow us to move future students from Meadowview to Mans. And that's Area Two, near Pine Meadow Golf Course and the neighborhood immediately west of there, just north of Gulf Road. And then if it's still needed, we have a third area identified, kind of along London Road and Damon. We can move from Meadowview to Mans also, if we need to exercise that option to get us the relief we need. So choice will be available to all the families in the identified areas, but we have, staff has had most success with new kindergarten families focusing on the oldest child who's a kindergartner. New families to the neighborhood, and in particular, the Choice Area One neighborhood has relatively high concentration of rental property. And so families, household tenure is shorter typically. And so you'd have new students moving into that neighborhood with greater frequency. And existing families with option to alternative school request to the Choice School if desired. So if you're already a second or third grader, you have that option to go to this other school, knowing that you're doing that potentially in order to give relief to those classes that your student might be experiencing.
And another, some of the other questions the committee has discussed would, were really around what would be the impact of adding more students to Robbins? And so they asked things like, well, what about the learning materials? You know, will Robbins have enough desks or enough tables and chairs? Will they have the books or the iPads that they need? Or what about the teaching staff? You know, will we have to hire more teachers at Robbins or more aides? Or what if students have special needs and they need some additional resources? And what about the office staff? Will they end up needing, you know, more counseling time? Or another secretary to help with attendance? Or, you know, additional help for Mr. Donzie, the principal? And really, the answer to that is that within the district, the number of children that we serve is not changing. And to be honest with you, these resources always follow the children. So as enrollments fluctuate district-wide, we do have staff at the district level who are counting, how many textbooks does Robbins have? Do they have enough fourth-grade textbooks for the number of fourth graders that they're going to have this year? And if they don't, we have staff at the district office who send those textbooks even before the teachers have to ask for them. So we have folks that are monitoring enrollment and looking to make sure that the learning materials are there and ready for the kids. And I think from the school standpoint, a lot of that is just seamless, you know. Now, during staffing season, we're really looking at what is the enrollment and how many teachers will be needed at any school next year? How many fourth-grade teachers will Robbins need? That is something that happens automatically every year. And as students' needs fluctuate, the staffing also fluctuates. So I think we can be confident that Robbins will have what it needs in order to meet the needs of the students that could be joining them. I think our goal would be probably a few dozen kids or a couple of dozen kids to be able to shift. So we really would be talking, I would say, our hope, if we could get between 20 and 40, that would be ideal, that would decrease the Mans enrollment by 10%. And then we could backfill with Meadowview students by that same amount. So, you know, when we look at Robbins' overall enrollment, I don't know how drastically it would change with this plan. So again, just to review, the recommendation before you from the committee is that we establish flexible boundaries in the three areas that Josh described earlier, and that those boundaries would begin to be flexible in the fall of 2020 and remain flexible until a long-term plan is identified, either through facilities and a referendum or some other option, should that be necessary. And with that, we are ready for questions and comments.
This is Charles. What about Option Three, the idea that you have siblings that want to be in the same? If they move, they want to move together. If they want to stay, they want to stay together.
Our commitment to the families is that we will keep them together. So as an example, Commissioner Vu, you can see here that we really do focus on new kindergartners, particularly those with the oldest child going to kindergarten, because that's something that families do consider. So as an example, if my youngest child was in kindergarten, but I had three other children that already went to a school, would I want my youngest child to go to a different school? Typically, those families would say no to this option, and these boundaries are all choice. So we won't be asking or forcing anybody to attend the new school. We have the most success with kindergartners who are the oldest. But if my youngest, if I did want my youngest to go to the Choice School, I would have the option then of my older children also going. So we see this model with the Dual Immersion Program. We have some kindergartners who have been accepted into the Dual Immersion Program, who had older siblings. We also allow those older siblings to attend Longfellow so that they could have a school experience with their sibling. We don't want to split up families.
Any other questions?
Help me understand, what about the policy of two-mile bus ride?
Are you, are you asking about whether they would be transported to either school?
If they have to transport, then by themselves, then it's a disadvantage for them. Is the transportation going to be an issue if a family is to go with Option Three?
Josh, do you want to speak to what Jim Fie from Student Transit shared at the work session? Or would you like me to?
I can start, and if I like something, please complete it. So the work session, we had a representative from Student Transit, and he was able to confirm that about these Choice Areas as drawn does not result in any trips that'd be over two miles. And since that they are in these areas, they would be transported by bus anyway, given the transportation constraints in this area. So as you can see on the map, the eastern boundary there is Highway 93. So kids who live west of that, we're not expecting them to walk past that barrier. That's a really not safe situation, so they're going to be bused. And then on the south side here of these, of Choice Two and Three is Gulf Road. And that's a similar situation where that's a safety concern for students who may be walking south to Meadowview. So in all these areas, there would be bus transportation provided for the students, and many of them ride the bus right now. And we have a really strong perspective of the committee of supporting neighborhood schools in terms of having students live as close to the school as possible. And just given the transportation system in this area, it provides those barriers where safe walking, especially by younger kids, is not really, not really realistic. And so the bus transportation is provided.
Thank you. Any other question? We don't need to take an action tonight, but what would be the next steps? When do you need?
Yeah, we would ask that this be placed on the consent agenda in an upcoming meeting so that we know that if this is the direction that the board would like the district to move, then we could begin contacting families that live in those Choice Areas so that they can, you know, consider the option. And we can then assign children to the school that the parents are choosing for next fall.
Thank you. Would members agree to that?
Yes, Eric, or Dr. Torres, sorry. I would like to see, Kim said an upcoming meeting. I'd like to see it on the next meeting. The sooner that we can approve this step, the sooner we can start contacting parents and get more relief for Mans and Meadowview, again, on this short-term plan. I'd like it for the next meeting, if possible.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think some kind of information needs to go out to the school that will be involved with this change.
The principals that were impacted by this discussion were all in attendance at the Demo and Trends meeting. So they're aware of the conversation and of what our recommendation is to the board tonight.
Thank you. Any other concern?
I'm sorry, but I'm also thinking about the families. Even though we have children at the moment, future children can also be involved. A family in all the school needs to be heard.
With that noted, then pass on this information to Agenda Setting Committee for tomorrow. Make the accommodation. Is that all right?
Yes, and I will work on, Commissioner Vu, I heard, notification to families in the impacted areas.
This is Lori Beek, I have one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Beek.
It's about the schools. So Ms. Kohler, you mentioned that the principals in the schools were in attendance. Are they in support of this proposal from Demo and Trends? Is this, was it done collaboratively? Would this be their recommendation?
I am looking to see if any of them are participating today. And I don't know how to pull up my participant list while I'm presenting, but they were, they were very much part of the discussion. So for that, for that meeting, they did not attend as, as public. They joined, there were a couple of meetings. They joined the group and they were part of the conversation. They talked about some of the challenges they have that exist in their schools now. Mr. Donzie talked about some of the flexibility he would or wouldn't have within his school. So I do believe that they were very much part of the conversation. And, and I don't, I don't know, Josh, if you recall, I don't recall any objections to the plan at all from the principals. Josh, did you recall any objection from those principals?
No, I, the concerns that they had were mostly procedural in terms of how this would work and how we would, how we would try to seek this level of balancing, recognizing that when we're only talking about moving perhaps two dozen students, it's a, it's a meaningful number in terms of a classroom going from perhaps 27 students to, you know, 24 students. You know, they're just, they're concerned about the, just the overall capacity. And we're really working on the margins with this plan. And we're also working under assumptions that we recognize that we don't know how much change in students there'll be year to year. And so we're putting some, some faith in that this will get the the amount of extra cover that these, these principals need in the short term.
Commissioner Beek, I do also remember, you know, Josh, as you spoke, I also remember Principal Grant saying that overall numbers of students is one thing. Where they fall in a grade level is another thing. So I may, for example, be a principal at a school that looks like I have lots of room, but I might have a grade level that's very close to the capacity. You know, sometimes we just get those bubble classrooms. And so we talked, we did talk then about, you know, when we, when we look at families in those choice areas, that would be, you know, information that we could certainly share with those families. For example, you know, if you've got a fourth grader and a second grader in a new family to the neighborhood, I could, for example, say, here are your two options. I want you to know, you know, at this school right now, fourth grade is a large class. Your child would be entering. And I could, you know, provide the information to families about how many kids are in the classes so that, you know, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be making some of those bubble classrooms even bigger intentionally.
Commissioner Beek, I'll just add that Heather Grant is the principal at Mans is on the committee.
That's true.
So actively voted in support of bringing the recommendation. So at least from that one, we have a vote on the record of support.
Thank you, everyone.
So noted that pass on this information to the Agenda Setting Committee for tomorrow and plan accordingly.
Thank you.
Our next point in the agenda is discussion on possible first reading of changes to Policy 185, School Board Committees. And this was sent back to Policy and Governance, and Policy and Governance made some language adjustment requested by Commissioner Harder. Now it's back for full board consideration. So the new language is noted in green. Anyone like to read the green parts? The sentences with green parts. As a volunteer.
I'm willing to.
Thank you, Dr. Rodean.
One School Board Member shall serve in an advisory capacity as a non-voting representative to each of these District Advisory Committees: Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation Board, Edstart Policy and Governance Committee, School Wellness Committee, Kinley Charter School Governance Board, Montessori Charter School Governance Board, and Eau Claire Virtual School Governance Board. For the purposes of this policy, Board members shall be permitted to speak at meetings to the same extent that all members are permitted to do so. Board members shall not serve as a voting member of the committee to avoid any appearance of speaking or acting on behalf of the board. Members have the responsibility of serving as a liaison between the board and committee, but shall not provide assurances or directives on behalf of the board unless given express permission by board action. Other Committees. Other Committees shall be appointed in the manner deemed necessary, and their duties shall be prescribed at the time of appointment. Learning Environments and Partnerships Leap Committee. The charge of this committee is to provide guidance and recommendations to the School Board related to LEAP zones as described in Policy 332. This committee includes two principals, educators drawn from a variety of different schools and grade levels, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and community members. School Board members may audit the meetings, but shall not provide assurances or directives on behalf of the School Board unless given express permission by board action. Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee. The charge of this committee is to provide data, guidance, and recommendations to the School Board regarding decisions related to boundaries, expansions, facilities, and other community trends. School Board members may audit the meetings, but shall not provide assurances or directives on behalf of the board unless given express permission by board action.
Thank you, Dr. Rodean. Questions or commentary about this policy language?
This is Aaron. I have a, just a comment. I think it's, boy, it seems like such a long time ago we talked about this. And I'm, but I, my recollection is, I think, sort of my primary question was about the notion of public comment. And that we try to normalize that across these committees and with a suggestion that, you know, what we're doing in in these public, regular business meetings on Monday meetings, as well as what we're doing in the Budget Committee, is that after each agenda item, we offer public comment and that we try to normalize that across these committees. That was some of the language I was looking for in particular. I don't note that here in any of the green text. Maybe it's elsewhere that I'm not seeing.
It's, it's hard to remember what our conversations were about this, but I think, I think there were a couple points that we had discussed in Policy and Governance. And one was that any, as I recall, any, any chairman can accept public comment at any time. So we kind of felt like that should be up to the chairman of the committee. The other, the other maybe direction we went in was the concern that if there are board members present as, as the public, that, help me remember what we were talking about here, Eric. But wasn't the concern that at some, at some point, if you have, if you have a board member appearing as a public member, then you've got quorum issues? And so I remember that as being part of our discussion as well. And so part of what we were going for here was trying to get to the idea of let's get at least the policy all the same here, which is that the LEAP language, the Demo and Trends language, all of that reflects the other language that we have here. Any individual committee chairman could accept comment from the audience, as I think you do regularly in Budget Committee, but that we wouldn't want to tie that. We already have the Roberts Rule, so that sort of governs that. So I, I don't know that it was necessary to sort of outline that in maybe the policy. Eric, can you fill in some pieces there?
That was our, was our conversation, the terms of our conversation.
It's been a while. I'll, I'll give you that.
Yeah, it is. I don't have any objections to the language around board involvement here. I think that's, that's all seems quite appropriate. I was, I did like the idea of normalizing, you know, and just codifying our normalization of the way that we deal with public comment across these different committees. I also, it's related to another item we have coming up, which is around minutes. And I was glad to see that one. I consider that a similar kind of normalization. I was glad to see that. I don't know. I, I would be happy to see it in here. I don't want to cause a fuss if others don't feel strongly about it, though.
I guess I just feel like it's already covered in lots of other things that we already do.
It may be covered, but it doesn't happen as a, as a practice that the, you know, it was a, it was a change for us to do it even in Budget Committee, and it's a relatively recent change.
So, so that really wouldn't apply to, for example, LEAP and Demo and Trends. You're talking more about P and G and budget and the third one up there. Blanking. Because now, in the sense that we're taking board members off of LEAP and, and in essence, non, you know, taking them out of Demo and Trends in sort of that fashion, really what you're saying is the only place where that kind of comes into play is Budget Development, P and G, and then the Joint Commissions is, is really where you would have that need for a kind of community input in the, in the way that you're talking about.
No, well, I don't know. I didn't, I, myself, I don't limit it to those. I, I think it's, I think it's valuable to offer it in any setting. And, you know, within limits, and we have limits. So I think that if we outline the, sort of the expectation as well as the limits, I think it should be manageable across all of these committees personally. But again, I, I don't mean to hold up, you know, the progress of business on this one point.
Okay, thank you then. We'll include this in the consent agenda for our next session. And we'll move forward from there. Is that all right?
Yeah, I wouldn't have any objection to that.
Thank you. So we'll include this in the, in the consent agenda for next session. And I lost my screen for, for that. Okay, sorry about that. The next point in the agenda is discussion on possible first reading of changes to Policy 652, Revenues from Investments. This is a language that P and G worked with Abby Johnson. And Abby, would you remind us the purpose of this modified language?
Sure. With the change in the OPEB Trust Investment Advisor, they asked for some specific language in the policy that talks about our investment for the OPEB Trust Fund. And so they gave us a sample, and basically, they just wanted us to add the guidelines into the policy. And so we came to Policy and Governance, or Policy and Governance, and the committee recommended we just added our stance in there. And then we also talked about how does the board get that written update of what the interest earnings are? And I think I shared with Policy and Governance that's part of the normal monthly board status report. There's, the interest shows up every month right on the revenue page. And so we walked through where that's at. And so that's where, I think the recommendation was a written report on an annual basis, and we updated that language to show that it's actually monthly, because that's how often the board is seeing it and approving it. So that was the purpose of this change.
Thank you very much. The new language is very brief. I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and read it for Policy 652. The addition to the policy is the OPEB Trust Agreement follows the policies in 652 exhibit, Employee Benefit Trust Fund of the Eau Claire Area School District. The Executive Director of Business Services shall monitor the status of the district's investment portfolio on a regular basis and provide information to the board regarding the district's investments activities on a monthly basis in the financial, financial report. Any questions about this proposed language? Then we'll include this revised policy in our consent agenda for the next meeting. Thank you. The next point in the agenda is discussion on possible first reading of changes to Policy 184 Minutes. In our prior session, we discussed about what we are expected by policy and what, and how that is different from our practice in regards to notes taking. Our practice has been going way beyond what Robert Rules indicate. So to make things more expeditions and easier to manage, we have proposed this modified language. Anyone would like to volunteer reading this draft?
Go ahead and read it.
Thank you.
I'm going to start at the beginning, even though there's. The minutes of all meetings and informal notes of any closed sessions shall be prepared and distributed to each board member before the next regular meeting and filed at the Administration Building. Minutes of all board and committee meetings shall be approved at the following meeting. Minutes of regular and special meetings of the board shall be mailed to official newspaper for publication within one week after board approval. Minutes shall be taken in compliance with Wisconsin Open Meeting Laws and Roberts Rules of Order. Meeting minutes shall include the following: Title of the meeting, including the name of any board committee, the time, date, and place of the meeting, names of the board members or committee members who are in attendance or are excused or absent from the meeting, the essential elements of every official action taken at the meeting, including the subject matter of a motion, persons making and seconding the motion, and a record of the vote taken on the motion. A brief description of the title and substance of any reports presented at the meeting.
Thank you. And the rationale behind this is that we have all our meetings recorded. So if we ever needed to revisit the context of a decision, then reviewing those records will be more accurate than having a word-by-word record in a minutes. And will save us the effort to modify minutes as well. So I think this reflects the desire of the board from our last meeting. Would you be willing to include this draft in our consent agenda for next session?
Eric, I have one small change, and it's just stylistic. I'm a big fan of the Oxford comma. So I would like another comma after date in the second bullet point. I know that's petty and small, but it really does get under my skin a little.
Very good. Is there any other comma missing?
Not comma, but clarifications.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So committee meetings include ad hoc committee meetings.
Correct. All committee meetings. Did I answer your question, Commissioner Vu?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
I have a question.
Harder?
Thank you. Was there any discussion about the, the posting of these minutes? I've found it, I don't know if, I've always had a little trouble finding minutes in a consistent way across the different meetings. And I don't know if it came up in, in this review here about the policy for how and where minutes will be posted.
That will be a meta question.
So all of the board minutes are posted in board docs as well as on the district's website. Though they're kind of special because we use board docs, they're also published in the local newspaper. All of the remaining committees, they each have their own page. So on the district website, there's a tab called Board, and under that is a Board Committee section. And each committee has a page where we post the agendas and the minutes as well. And we also are happy to help anybody find them at any time. So if you want them directly emailed to you or anything like that, the executive assistant in charge of that committee is always happy to help with that.
That's great, thank you. Could I follow up then? Any thought about just the timeframe of the posting of the minutes? Or an expected sort of protocol for how soon they would be posted?
Currently, we post them after they are approved. So for example, when the board approved the minutes tonight from March 13th and 16th, they went live in board docs automatically, and then tomorrow morning I'll post them on the website. So we like to make sure that the board or the committee approves them first, and then we make them public.
That's, that's great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mera. With those questions, then we'll include this in the consent agenda for our next session. Our next item in the agenda is request for future agenda items. Is there any particular request from board members? I'd like to suggest the next two items. If it were at all possible, have a report of how the online educational services are going, what kind of difficulties and or challenges we are facing, just to get an idea of how we're moving forward. And perhaps is prudent to start thinking, or that the leadership team starts thinking about the possibility of fall, to what extent this might be prolonged towards the fall, or if we need to go into safer at home modes again in the fall because of coronavirus coming back on, on a second wave. Perhaps is prudent to start thinking about that contingency and have some planning ahead of time, even if they are just contingency. Any other agenda item?
The only other question I have is who is on for agenda setting tomorrow?
That'll be Dr. Beekah, myself, and a member would be?
Erin Harder.
Thanks.
I'm happy to attend tomorrow. I will say I did just attend, and I, I know there was a little confusion with the schedule. I think Commissioner Nordean was there last time, but then realized it was a mistake. And so I'm happy to attend, but I just want to make sure I'm not taking more than my fair share of attendance.
I believe that was due to a, like a flip that we had done earlier in the year. So it should still be an equal number.
Right, sounds good.
Great, thank you very much. We'll meet tomorrow at eight. Are we meeting in person?
No, everyone should have a link in your Outlook calendar to join via Teams. So we'll be meeting remotely in the morning.
Great, thank you very much, Mera. So before we adjourn, I would like to express our gratitude on behalf of the Board of Education, all our teachers and staff that have provided leadership and guidance and, and care in the transition into online educational services. This is something that we appreciate greatly. We don't take it for granted. We understand that the difficulties will continue to be there. We appreciate your dedication. We appreciate your enthusiasm and your persistence. I think that speaks volumes of the quality of teachers and staff that we have in our, in our district. We encourage you to continue moving forward, being creative and energetic, and to share your concerns with your principals and so that we can have concerted action to address those, those concerns. Would like to know to what extent the technology is there to help your work. We also want you to take care of yourselves and your family. So finding that right balance between online servicing and your life in your home, that is also important to us. So we would like to hear some of that in that report for next session. And also express our gratitude to all the health providers and emergency responders that are keeping our community safe. Remind the public that it's very important to follow the directions of maintaining social distancing so that we reduce the level of infection as, as much as possible. We understand that the curve is not flattened yet, that our peak is coming perhaps in a couple of weeks. And it depends from, on all of us to keep it as flat as possible. So we encourage again, social distancing and good mental health habits. Before we adjourn, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved? Moved by Commissioner Harder.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Klinkhammer. Those who, well, we need to do a roll call.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
You bet.
Commissioner Beekah? Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes, thank you. A special thank you to Marisa Anton and Mera Miski that have helped us with the electronic platform. We appreciate your help. This would have not been possible without your leadership here. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.